Okay, all right. Hello, everyone. My name is Sunimi and I'm the president of League of Women Voters for Ashland and Bayfield Counties. Before I go on, I just want to go over some housekeeping issues tonight. If you, we have received a lot of questions already, but if you do have a question that you would like to submit, if we have time, we will get to it. And you can email that to Carolyn Pear and you'll see her email address in the chat function. It's C P A R E nine one at gmail dot com. All right, and we've set this up for speaker view, so you should be seeing the person who is speaking. But you also have the option of looking at different views. So first of all, as I mentioned, I am with the League of Women Voters. And we are a nonpartisan political organization whose main objective is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation of all in government at all levels, especially locally. The League is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always working on the vital issues of concern to members and the public. On February fourteenth, the League will be celebrating its one hundred and second anniversary. For over one hundred years, we have been working to make democracy work. This candidate forum is but one example of the important work the League promotes. I want to thank the candidates who are here tonight. Running for and holding public office is a very important part of our democracy. It is a huge commitment, yet they are doing their part. Thank you. Tonight, we are especially pleased to introduce two Washburn youth who will serve as our timers for the evening. We feel it is essential to engage our youth, youth in the democratic process. Young people who are politically engaged earlier in life are more likely to remain engaged in the future and to be part of an electorate that is the rep, that is representative of the country, which should be a key goal of our democracy. So with that, I'd like to introduce Ellen Suski Funk and Sophie Philipzak. Ellen is homeschooled and attends the Washburn High School Government Class. Sophie attends Washburn High School and also participates in the same government class. Ellen and Sophie, I'd like you to take a moment to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit more about you and why you're here tonight.
Hi, my name is Ellen Suski Funk. I live in Washburn and I am a junior being homeschooled.
My name is Sophie Philipzak and I'm a junior enrolled in Washburn High School.
Some of the questions you will hear tonight were actually sent in from the students in our government class at Washburn High School.
Our job tonight is to be the timers. We'll ring a bell to alert each speaker when their time is almost up and then again when their time is over.
We're really glad to be here.
We are. Sue, we'll pass the virtual mic back to you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, now I'd like to introduce Joyce Keel. Joyce is our moderator for this forum. Joyce has been with the League for over ten years. I want to thank Joyce and the other League volunteers working this forum. They were chosen because they live outside of the city of Washburn and cannot vote in this election. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Joyce.
All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. Well, tonight you'll have the opportunity to assess three of the four candidates running in the February fifteenth primary for the Member-at-Large position on the Washburn School Board, namely Tina Sapinik, John Thomas, and Michael Wright. Now Ed Gruhl is also on the ballot and we at first thought he couldn't attend. Then he was with us on the phone for a few minutes. He's in the midst of traveling, so if he happens to get reconnected, we'll, we'll add him in. But in the meantime, we'll just proceed. So our format is opening statements, question and answer period, and closing statements. We're going to explain how this works since all of us participate. First, you'll see that all responses are time limited. I'll announce the time limit for each question generally. Oh, I see that Ed is back in, into the system, I think. Okay, I'll announce the, the time limit for each question. It'll be generally one, one and a half or two minutes. I'm just going to interrupt a minute. Ed, I think you might have your microphone on. If you could, if you could mute yourself, that would be good.
I'll try. I don't know if I can or not.
Okay, okay. Otherwise, all we see on the screen is your name and a black, black screen with your name and the other speakers aren't being shown, I don't think.
I muted him, Joyce.
Okay, okay. All right, so when a candidate has thirty seconds to go, our timekeepers Ellen and Sophie will ring, make the following sound. If you could please do that thirty second sound. Thank you, followed by the times up ring at the end of the allotted time. If we could hear that, please. I'm not hearing that. If we could.
Let me try again.
Okay, oh, there we go. There we go. Just to tell you the reasons for our time limits. First, the League is diligent about treating all candidates equally. And second, if we don't have time limits, then we don't treat the audience fairly as we want to get to as many audience questions as we can. And we know that format is not perfect, but we hope it strikes the right balance. We randomly drew candidate names and that determined their speaking order for opening statements. So after the opening statements, the insert, that candidates will answer your questions. Many, many questions were already sent to us, but we also will take written questions during the forum, for forum as Sue explained. And our question, Sir Carolyn, will screen them for defamatory content, which we don't allow, and for duplication. So we'll get to as many questions as we can, but tonight I'm sure we'll run out of time before we run out of questions. We always get so many thoughtful questions, so apologies if yours isn't asked. So the format is I read the question, a candidate may ask to have it repeated. The candidates will take turns going first unless the question is to a specific candidate. In that case, the candidate will answer and then the other candidates may answer or pass. Now, after all the candidates have responded to a question, each candidate may have one additional minute for rebuttal comment if they desire and an additional minute for counter rebuttal if a candidate desires. But you'll see as we go along that usually neither a rebuttal nor counter rebuttal is needed. So I will just ask the candidates to let me know if they wish to offer a rebuttal. So after that, we'll have the one minute closing statements and plan to finish up about seven thirty. So now it's time to hear from the candidates. And first will be Michael Wright, then John Thomas, Tina Sapinik, and then Ed Gruhl. So first, Mr. Wright.
Thank you. First, I just want to say how happy I am to be among four candidates running for one seat on the school board. School board is boring. It's supposed to be. But lately, it has not been boring. The culture wars and the partisanship tearing this nation apart have arrived at our school board meetings. It seems that the only thing anyone cares about anymore is COVID protocols and keeping their ideology out of our classrooms. But who are they? I think it's all of us. Because our certainly means all of us when it comes to classrooms, which is why I've been so dismayed at the tone of the meetings the past few months. People are angry, people are scared, and the result is have to zoom into meetings instead of getting together and talking like we would at church or patsies or the snog or at our kids athletic or choir event. This has to stop. Just because our nation is being torn apart by cynical politicians in the media doesn't mean we have to do the same to our community. We are neighbors, not us and them. By now, many of you will have received my mail. On one side, it says, let's put the board back in the school board. Once we do that, I truly believe we can move on to the important issues that are facing us as a community and how to address them. Those issues include ideology in the classroom and how to pay new teachers, paraprofessionals, and subs more than we pay our car mechanics and tax preparers. As for COVID protocols, the current board is evolving toward endemic stage. I think we could safely speed up that process, especially in the elementary school. Thank you for attending this forum and I look forward to elaborating on my opening statement. This is democracy at work.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Well, first off, I'm glad we have kind of like minds on some of these things. My name is John Thomas. I live in the town of Barksdale. I've lived here for ten years with my wife and three children. I work in Ashland, manage a business that said to stay open through COVID as an essential business. It has not been without its struggles, but it has succeeded. I'm asking for your vote on February fifteen because we are in need of people on our board that can have vision for the future of our children and know how to make things happen. All three of my children attend Washburn. Two in the high school, one in the elementary. The thinking and politics that we've had to endure need new direction. I have attended almost all of the board meetings since last April. I even applied for the open position last fall. I volunteered in the schools with each of my children's classes. I know that COVID is a real illness. I've had it and I've lost loved ones to it. I understand it. I know it has cost us so much more than we ever imagined two years ago. The time has come for us to provide solutions for our children and quit confusing and harming them. It saddens me that the school I picked for my children ten years ago because of its excellence is no longer a leader in the area. While other schools around us have opened up, we have continued to keep closed mindedness and confusion at the forefront. We've continued to make life for our students, teachers, and parents a nightmare. When will we wake up? I plan to bring new idea, to bring ideas to the table that will work to bring Washburn back to excellence. It's time to bring the adults, all of us, to the table and do what's right for our kids. Thank you.
Ms. Sapinik? Hi, my name is Tina Sapinik and I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight. I also, I also love seeing the student participation in this forum. I think that's really important. And it just kind of like something that you said early in the introduction. Said that if you get students involved at a young age, they're more likely to continue. And I just got a flood of memories with my time at the Badger Girls State when I was in high school and just didn't anticipate that. And so thank you, students, for being here. So I just wanted to take this a couple of minutes to introduce myself. Again, my name is Tina Sapinik. I work in Ashland. I moved here in two thousand and nine where I met my soon to be husband in the community. And now we have two kids in the elementary school, a third grader and a first grader. And we spend as much time as we can together and we work on our little, I don't know if you'd call it a hobby farm, but we have a couple of goats and a couple of chickens. And we love everything that this community has to offer, which is essentially why I'm running for this position. I, when I started working here, I came to the area specifically to help North Lakes Community Clinic, which what back then was known as the Lakes Community Health Center, to help them open a clinic in Ashland. I'm a dentist and, and as you probably know, dental services are sometimes hard to get. And we wanted to make a big impact in our community. And one of the things that we recognized very early on is that a way to make a large impact is to work with children. And this is something that, that I've enjoyed. I've been working with families in the community since then and I'm still working at North Lakes now. It's something that's really important to me. And making sure that we can understand our community's needs and understand our schools' needs and really working together. And so I'm super pleased to be here. Thank you all for your time and, and I can't wait to hear your questions.
All right, Ed Gruhl, if you're still there, please. Ed, are you on the phone?
It looks like we lost him.
Okay, apologies for that. He's in the midst of traveling and, and predicted that he would be coming in and out of service. So, so all right, okay, well, let's just go ahead and then and get started for, with the questions and answers. Okay. And wow, we already have so many questions, sort of where to begin. But we definitely will be discussing COVID. There were a lot of questions on that. But first, let's just go ahead and start with a bigger, more positive picture. There were two similar questions. I'll read. What about the school district do you believe is functioning well? Please explain the rationale behind your thoughts. And another asks, what is the school district of Washburn and/or the school board currently doing well? As a school board member, how will you promote continuing these things? And okay, we will start with Mr. Thomas. Hello?
Yep, I'm here. Okay, all right, what are we doing well currently? I think the school is doing a good job of trying to get information out to the parents. It's been a challenging time with lots of information coming to us. But for the most part, they've done well with anything new that's come up or letting us know of events coming up. The school has done well with implementing technology during this time to try to work with all the different avenues we've had. Virtual, at home, at home, mixed classes. The school and the staff that have tried to work through this and have worked through this have done the very best that they could to give our students what they can. On the school board, I would look for our administration, our teachers to bring forward ideas, needs. And I think the meetings that I've been to, this current school board has done that. People have come forward and said, we're in need of a wheelchair, a special one for kids. And they've approved it and found the funds to do that. And those are the things that the school board is good at and would continue to be good at. If there's a need, that's their job to find out how to get it and how to make it happen. And as a school board member, I would be, you know, looking for ways to continue to push those things that the administration staff asks for.
And I apologize, I think I forgot to, to tell you how much time you had.
I heard a ding.
Oh, okay. I was thinking about a minute and a half. So next we'll go with Ms. Sapinik on that.
Okay, great, thank you. So the first part of the question I heard was, what is the district doing well? And, and absolutely, I think that we're doing everything we can to keep learning options available and communication intact. From a little bit of a broader perspective, I think our district does outdoor learning and outdoor education unbelievably well. Like this is something that's really important to our community and it's something that I think our district has really embraced. It may not be intuitive for like everybody who's, who's implementing like an outdoor learning center, you know, a new outdoor learning classroom at the elementary school is a new thing. But I just love hearing the excitement and that's, that's one of the like, you know, tangible things that we can see that is coming out of that strength of our community. The other is like another tangible outcome of this like outdoor learning and outdoor experience is like maybe at the high school that agripreneur, you know, people, students selling goods out of the greenhouse, you know, plants. And maybe I think, I can't remember if they're selling vegetables, but point is they're doing that very, very well. And then just to echo, or just to go to second part, which is what is the school board doing well? I think communication, the school board is doing everything that they can to make school board meetings accessible to everybody and not just everybody, but everybody safely. And, and I've always appreciated the community involvement in the committees that the school board has. There's always a committee or community representation in the committee. And I feel like that community input is valued and important. Thank you.
Mr. Wright, please.
Well, I think that the school district is doing great things, in particular at the elementary level. When my kids started, I don't think that there was the, the pre-K classes that were, that are available now. That is a huge benefit to the community and getting kids started early in that pre-K program is, is really great. Going last is a little tough because I echo much of what John and Tina have said as well in terms of communication, especially. I think that, you know, every, every day I get an email almost, it seems like, about what's going on and what the opportunities are and it's, it's great. I think too that the special ed services, both at the elementary and at the high school level, high school, middle school level are, are doing a great job. They're a little underfunded, in my opinion. That's something that I would look to as a candidate is helping to, to boost the, the special ed program, program somewhat. I think that the board is doing a good job on managing the finances. The district is in really a very good financial situation right now. And it's, you know, it shows in, in the sense that we, we get more open enrolled kids into the district now than, than we lose to other districts. I think that that's a, that's probably the, the most important report card you can have on a district these days is how many kids are you drawing in from other districts? And then finally, I would, I would look to partner with the city on, on, on initiative. Oh, I'm done.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we'll move to four similar, very specifically, they said non-COVID questions. And I'll read these all four altogether. Outside of policies regarding COVID, please explain which school functions and policies you would like to see changed or addressed? Another person says, what would be your top non-COVID related priority? Another said, says, please tell us what three, oh, I'm sorry. I, and I see now that Ed Gruhl has joined us again. Ed, did you want to answer that first question before I moved on? And I, I'm sorry, I still don't hear Ed. So back to the, the second question.
And. Oh, okay. Yeah, first of all, you need to control my mute because I I'm able to, but could you?
Sue, I think you're controlling the mute button. Ed, this is addressing the first, the first question, which was, what was the school board in the school district doing right? Did you want to respond to that? Doing well? We seem to be having some technical problems. Which I, I'm. Sue, are you able to fix that mute issue?
Yes, can you hear?
You're breaking up very badly, so not really. All right. I'm sorry about that, everybody. Going to go back to the second question we were asking, which is about this specifically non-COVID questions. Again, I'm going to start over with that. It says, outside of policies regarding COVID, please explain which school functions and policies you would like to see changed or addressed? What would be your top non-COVID related priority? Another person says, please tell us what three non-COVID related changes you would like to bring forward as a school board member? And what do you think are the top three non-COVID related, related issues facing the school board? So that's sort of mismatch. You can see how many, how there is a strong interest though in knowing what your priorities would be that are non-COVID related for the school board. So starting with Ms. Sapinik.
Great, thank you. I would say, I would say one of our top issues is making sure that we are lowering the achievement gap in our schools and really trying to dial in and understand some of the disparities that exist in education for our students. I think that that is kind of the overarching, like, kind of goal. And then there's a couple of things that, that I think policies that could support this and, and encourage this kind of in a couple of different ways. And so number one is making sure that our students are ready to learn. And, and that can be a number of ways. I think that, that will, that will have, that will fall on the shoulders of, of the administration to kind of identify what our students need to, to be able to achieve. So whether it's like social and emotional wellness, help with, with their, with their mental health and getting mental health services if kids need this, having the support of, of their, of their community and making sure that kids get like well fed and our school nutrition program is up to date. So there's a, a number of things that kind of fall under this achievement gap area. I think also making sure that all students, not, not everybody who would benefit from like individual attention from a teacher like qualifies for special education. So I think that we have to increase our diversity of options, of learning options for students. And I think that this is something that Washburn has done well. And I think that it's something that we can work with the administration to make sure that, that all of these learning options are available to students. And then I would say a third thing or a third priority then would be supporting the teachers in the way that they would like support, you know? I, I don't know exactly what teachers need. There's like, there's so many things. And our teachers are working so hard and they're such experts in their, in their field. So however they feel like they need support, I would like to offer that to them. And I think that's a good idea for our school board. Thanks.
Okay, and thank you for the timer, timers for chiming in there. Ms., Mr. Wright, please.
Okay, I, I echo much of what Tina said. I, I think diversity of learning options, that's a great way to put it. Because by statute and federal, federal regulations, you know, special ed is sort of limited in terms of who it can serve. The more we can customize education for kids, instead of trying to force, you know, square pegs into round holes, the better we're going to be able to do, the better the kids are going to do. I think that one way to do that is to just get more help in the classrooms, whether that be with paraprofessionals or, or, you know, parents who can, who can, who can volunteer. Having more adults in the classrooms to help out is, is I think really important. Get the elderly school, you know, the, the kids are bouncing off the walls and being able to put them into groups and, and set them down, I think is, is would be great. Some policies to change. I, one thing that comes to mind for me is the high school, middle school now has a new cell phone policy, which I applauded, but I don't think it goes quite far enough. And so that's one that I'd really like to look at. I, I personally feel that cell phones should, don't even lie on campus at all during school hours. So that's, that's one of the policies I think that comes to mind for me that I'd like to look at. And a, a top non-COVID priority, I think, is just looking at ways to increase revenue for the district. Open enrollment is kind of a zero sum game. I think we need to look at ways long term to draw families to this area who will come and live in Washburn and become, and raise families here and, and increase our enrollment that way.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Once again, it is hard going last. So some of the things to look at, as we've said there, and as I said about volunteering in the classroom through this campaign already, I've talked with people about bringing all hands on deck. For this, I mean, I right now I see 135 participants in this. If even half of those could give a few hours of their time throughout the week, whether it be in the elementary, whether it be in the high school, where they could mentor some students. If we have opportunities, if we can work together with the administration, what kind of opportunities, not to give more work to the teachers, but to take some off their backs? That's what I did when I worked in the second grade, just reading to kids, helping catch them up. Can you help this kid with math? Can you help this kid with some reading? Those are things that any one of us can do. And if we just have time and if we have those resources of the community to come together and build those kids, I think that's a very important part. As far as outstanding policies that need to be changed, I tend to agree with some of the other things, Mike, with the cell phones. I have a hard time with technology as being a business manager right now. It's very hard that we've trained our society to constantly look at those things and not get the things done we need. Where to go with that? That would be a discussion with parents and with teachers and the administration. How should we address those things? The biggest thing is when policy changes happen is I think we really need to get more community involvement, more community ideas with it. What are we looking for? And not be just one sided or just have a few of small groups views. And I think there's plenty of opportunities for community involvement in those. Thank you.
Right. We just had a I'm just told that we had a an email from Ed Grue that said he was dropping off. So too bad about the the technology issues with the phone. But all right, well, let's move on to the big topic, the elephant in the room, COVID. There were lots and lots of questions emailed in about COVID policies and practices. And there were questions about masking. There were questions about exemptions to masking, quarantining, the need to make it easier for healthy children to stay in school and on a regular routine, what the criteria to go virtual should be. Questions about the closed door policy to visitors, including parents. Question about what would be your top COVID related priority if you were elected to the school board? And I thought about reading each of these questions separately, but because the whole topic is so interrelated, I think I'll start with just giving each of you three minutes to talk about what the Washburn School District's COVID policies and practices should be. And if that's not enough time to cover this large topic, then we'll reassess at the end of that. But let's start with three minutes and starting with Mr. Wright, please.
Oh, boy. Okay. I think that I'm going to start out by just stating some of the settled science that is out there. Masks keep the wearer safe. School age children are not at risk of serious illness from COVID. Very young children need to see faces to develop emotional and social skills. And 80% of the students in the high school, middle school are vaccinated and 90% of the high school, middle school staff is vaccinated. Taken together, all of those things, I really don't see the need for a mask mandate. At the high school level right now, which is I have two kids in high school. And on a regular basis, they ask me for a mask exemption. And I just, I can't really give it to them because they don't really have a medical reason for that. But what's happening is that more and more kids are getting these exemptions and you just have this this divide. It's it's almost like some kids have to have a dress code and some kids don't. And that's how the kids there see it. I think that we either have masks and no exemptions or masks are just voluntary. If a kid wants to wear a mask, wear a mask, otherwise don't. My main concern really is at the elementary level. You know, we've got first graders now who have spent a third of their lives behind a mask. And I worry that that is going to have long term effects on their moral health and their social development. And I worry that these kids have learned that that nothing is safe. There's never going to be a safe environment and that they might never want to take that mask off, which maybe is a little bit of an exaggeration. But what happens when they no longer, when 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 society finally says you don't have to wear the mask anymore, is the kid going to want to take the mask off? And given the fact that they are just, they're they're not at risk at all, young children especially of serious illness. I don't see the need for the mask mandate at all at the elementary school. As far as protocols having to do with closing schools, you know, I I recently listened to an interview with Rochelle Walensky, the CDC director. And she said, schools should be the last place to close and the first to open. So this is coming from the CDC, you know, she's saying, we really, you know, we shouldn't be closing schools. I know personally, when when the school closes, my kids, they just get depressed. They fall into a depression and they stay up all night and they sleep half the day. I didn't hear the warning bell, but okay.
I didn't hear it either. Apologies for that. But we'll we'll see at the end of everybody's talk if we if we need to come back to this. Okay, Mr. Thomas.
I would agree with Mike because on the mask issue, that is a that is a thing that's dear to me. This week, my fifth grader was quarantined again because somebody else in the class tested positive. Our testing site is is overused. And it's used many times throughout the day. Some people test several times a day. I don't know what we're looking for, but our numbers are high because we go there so often. And also my daughter today, that's she could have tested and went back to school. But she said last night that she didn't want to go back because if she has to go back, she has to wear a mask. And we followed, our family followed what Dr. Wyatt said at the August board meeting. You could go home and write an exemption for social and emotional. I was worried about my children having issues with being behind a mask. There are many people in this world, as as we all know, what do criminals wear when they go into a home or when they go into someplace? They wear a mask. You don't see their face. And now we have given a a group of kids, everybody has a mask. It's it's not right, and we've messed up our kids that way. The masks need to go away. Science proves it. I always say we follow the science. And we follow the CDC. Well, they both say that we should get rid of those. Those need to go away as far as COVID policy. If somebody wants to wear one, I have absolutely no problem with that. This should be a matter of choice. And the choice is, if I want to wear one, I'll wear one, and it makes me feel safer. If I don't, I won't do that. The other thing is with closing the schools, again, the the school should be the last thing to close. We should do everything we can to keep our kids going. We should go to levels as a policy, like we would handle any other thing like the flu, like influenza, like other major outbreaks and go to a higher level. If I believe it's about 30% get this, then we would look at what we would have to do and close up the school. And we have the virtual option right now. So really, the school should never close. The kids should be able to have access all of the time. And so it becomes a matter of choice for each person, what they feel comfortable with. Just like how we what what is our risk rate? Yes, people do get sick. And some people very sick, some people not very sick. We don't know that. It's an illness that's here and there. It can be everywhere and nowhere at the same time. We don't know. But we can't continue to teach our kids to live in fear of something we can't see. Thank you.
Ms. Sopnik.
Okay, so kids should be in school. Schools are a safe place for kids and they're an important place for kids. The way we can do safety is by masking. That is not to say that this pandemic hasn't gone up and down already. Right now, we're hopefully on a downward trend, right? But I trust in the system, the COVID transition committee has done a great job. It's a relatively new committee. But I trust in that consensus process and that deliberation with a community representation, representation from the health professionals, representation from the school. It's it's a great way to kind of hash out the current state of our community so that we can make appropriate choices and appropriate decisions so that our kids can be in school. Because I believe that masks work. I wear one every day, and it's very important in my job, even pre-pandemic. This was something that we were doing every day. So we know that they work. And I also would keep in mind as a school board member about the flexibility that we'll need to have. We will need to be able to pivot and turn. And that is probably the hardest thing because it feels like inconsistency. But really, it's going to be the driving recommendations from the COVID transition committee and the guidance from the health professionals in the area that are going to help keep our kids in school. I think that's really important. I think that the COVID transition committee is just that, a transition, because we are transitioning into a more like endemic state, right? We want to be able to understand Washburn's data and Washburn's position in this in this global society. So not everything that happens in one part of the state or one part of the country will apply here. But sometimes things happen here that aren't happening anywhere else. And so so I really think that we're poised very well. I am looking forward to the opportunity to collaborating and understanding and doing the best job that we can with the information that we have. I think that the school information sessions are vital, and I think that that has been going well. And I think that helps with with that ever evolving like communication piece. And and I'm looking forward to more volunteering in the school. I'm looking forward to seeing parents and teachers and children at gatherings and and all of these things. But I'm definitely waiting to hear what the consensus is from the COVID transition committee and and the administrators and with the data from our school and also the data from like the health professionals and the health department in our area.
And I'll ask if anybody would like another minute to talk about that, starting with Mr. Wright, if you'd like another minute.
Yeah, just just briefly, I mean, I I agree with Tina that the the COVID committee and the the discourse and the dialogue is very important. But I don't think anyone is saying that we should have a mask ban. We're not talking about I'm not saying that, you know, we shouldn't be wearing masks. I wear a mask at work, too, if I'm installing insulation or or finishing drywall or or whatever. I mean, all I'm saying is that it shouldn't be mandated. Because first of all, it it can't be enforced or nobody's enforcing it. You know, you go to sporting events, nobody's wearing a mask. And it's it's not really being enforced at the high school either. So I I think it it should be a choice and those who choose to wear it should wear it. And those who choose not to should not.
All right, Mr. Thomas, would you like another minute?
Sure. What we've been seeing with with current science about one way masking is that it can work to protect the one, the person that's wearing it regardless. And that's why healthcare professionals wear it too, to protect them and to protect the patients that's there. But I've never been to the dentist and worn a mask while they're working on me. Um, but so it protects her and it protects me as I'm laying there. But with if we work to protect our most vulnerable, because we do have some students in our school that are more vulnerable with health conditions. So if we find ways, I'm pretty sure there are ways that we can do things to protect them and still keep everybody in school whilst letting parents choose how they want, they want to do with their own children. I think the COVID transition committee, I've also been listening to that. And also, my daughter is in student government and she's a part of that as well. So I hear things from her on what's going on with that. That is a good avenue. As a board member, I would listen to the committees that I have too and take their advice and their recommendations because it is the committee, the community coming together in that. And so that needs to happen as a board member. So listen to the committees you've charged to come up with solution. Thank you.
Ms. Sopnik, would you like another minute?
Yeah, it's just like an emphasis on that particular transition. I think that this is such a fluid time and things change so rapidly. We don't know what the next variant is going to be. You know, nobody's claiming that that COVID is over because we don't know what's around the corner. We don't live in fear and so we'll use data and we'll talk to our like health professionals and we'll work with the COVID transition committee to come up with the best possible outcome for our kids because it's important for them to be in person and all of those other things. It's important for us to be able to communicate well and to and to balance our social and emotional health with all these other things. This is a public health issue. It's no longer it's not a one size, you know, it's not an individual choice, like this is, this is a community and we're just going to do our absolute best. And I think the way to do that is just communication, open transparency, and I'm looking forward to that.
All right. Um, if 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 it's anybody have any want to do a counter rebuttal, we can do that if you if you think it's necessary. All right. All right. We'll move on to the next set of questions. Ninety, I'll give you a minute and a half, 90 seconds on this for the timers. There were several questions about school board meeting, school board meetings and social media relating to school issues. Some with editorial comments about a perceived lack of civility and negativity. So the questions were basically, do you feel civility at school board meetings and in the community is important? And if you don't, please explain why not. And if you do think they are important, as a school board member, how will you address civility both within the school and community environments? And that will start with Mr. Thomas.
All right. With civility in a in a school board meeting, absolutely. There needs to be civility in that. One of the things I think we need to do as a school board is we need to meet our people face to face. I know we're doing Zoom on this tonight. But I know as a school board and as a school, if we need to social distance, we've already talked about the mask deal. So if people feel uncomfortable, they can wear masks there. But we also have a large gymnasium where people can be there together, but we need to face each other. We need to get together in person because then we can read facial features, we can read demeanors, we can see how people work. I've had opportunities in my own career where somebody does not agree with me 150%. But yet I've had to still meet with them and get together with them. We may walk away not agreeing, but we got together and we found a solution and we went forward on it. Those are hard to do, but we have to face those things. And as a school board member, I would meet with my people in person so we can see them and talk with them face to face in one on one conversations in a civil manner.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sopnik.
Okay, so I, um, can you repeat the question again?
Sure, I'll be happy to. Again, it relates to civility. Sure, I'll be happy to. Uh, again, it relates to civility issues. It says, the question was, do you feel civility at school board meetings and in the community is important? If you don't, please explain why not. If you do think they are important. As a school board member, how will you address civility both within the community, both within the school and community environments?
Okay, thanks. It was the how to address it part, um, that I wanted to think about a little bit. So, uh, I would say that it's um absolutely important. With the realization that I know that I cannot control other people's behaviors, I can only control what I can control. So in that mindset, um, I would just do my best to, to lead the only way I know how with communication and openness. And a, a listening mindset. Um, you know, some of uh my. Some of my previous like board experience, um, you know, there's so many different ways to approach the same problem. Um, and so I really think that we have more in common than we don't and really just feeling that intention, you know, before I start. Um, and if something is just too distracting, well, then we'll address that as it comes up. Um, I think that, I think that. We can potentially anticipate that, but if it, uh, but if it happens, I think we just have to take it kind of case-by-case. And, and work with our community and work with the administration and, um, and make this service, this school board meeting or committee meeting. Or whatever the, um, whatever the venue is, you just have to make it work for the people and that's super important. Um, I just have to, uh, I got a, I got a message, a private message, um, also. So a lot of people know me as Dr. Tina or Dr. Sapinik, um, but I, just so everybody's clear, I asked to be called Ms. So, um, so I just wanted to make sure that was out there because I know that some people are like, might be questioning or wondering about that. So I just want to take that quick little moment to say that. So thank you, um, Joyce, for, um, moderating and like, and that's my answer. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ri- Mr. Wright, please.
Right, uh, civility, of course, is, is vital, um, for, for discourse and, and democracy for that matter. And it, and, and in our society, it has been declining rapidly. Um, it's not really clear why, but people are angry. And I think a lot of times they don't even know what they're angry about. As far as dealing with it at a, at a board meeting, okay, I thought that the informational meeting we had a couple of weeks ago. Was a great format for people to be able to talk and be heard and to ask questions and have them answered. That is something I'd like to see happen every month, maybe even twice a month. And it doesn't have to be an official board meeting with a quorum and everything. But maybe, you know, a board member or two are there and administration to just let people talk. With all limits and express their concerns and be heard. Uh, I think getting these meetings back to in-person is really important because it's a lot harder. To be not civil when you're looking somebody in the eye face-to-face. I think that if the school is safe enough for the kids, it's safe enough for the school board. And if we all have to wear masks as a requirement to do that, then I don't have a problem with that. I think that there is a tendency sometimes for boards to get authoritarian and set limit. You know, stringent limits and rules and post a sheriff's deputy, and I don't think that's right. Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you. Um, okay, um. There were several similar questions about diversity include and inclusion. And I'll read them together and give, uh, each of you a minute and a half to respond. The one question said, the Washburn School District has a significant number of, of pupils who identify as being with it. Within the LGBTQ community. What are your views and experience with this as a school board member? How might you be of support to these pupils, especially those who are transgendered? Another person writes, how will you as a school board member support and recognize the LGBTQ plus students? And make sure they are fully included in the curriculum, feel safe and accepted? And another person said, what do you have to say to the students and parents in the LGBTQ community in our school? So all very similar questions, a minute and a half, starting with Ms. Sapinik.
Okay, so, um, so I believe that inclusive learning, um, is not just a priority for Washburn. But a priority for all of us and for hopefully every school in the country. Um, inclusive is just so important for somebody to feel engaged and to, uh, and to collaborate. Um, and it, and I'm so proud of our district for, um, for understanding that and moving in that direction. Um, I am health professional, uh, so I, I know the, um, potential damage. That discriminatory policies can have, um, in terms of access to healthcare. Um, access and participation in sports and activities and then absolutely, uh, further, um. Further stigma and discrimination. And it's just, there's just no place for that in our school. And, uh, and I would just commit to the families and commit to the students. Um, that I am here to listen and to support. Um, our students are bright and strong and incredibly smart. And, uh, and if they want to, um, participate in a gay and straight alliance. Then all, by all means, like this, this is the kind of alliance and the collaboration, um, that, that students have done in other, in other communities. And, um, I'm not saying that's what is right for us, but I would be in full support of anything that is inclusive.
All right, Mr. Wright.
I think that it's, I think rates of suicide amongst transgender kids and LGBTQ kids is way higher. Than it is amongst other kids and that is a problem in our society. And I do not want it to be a problem in our schools. Um, I think that all kids should be treated equally. And, um, I, I, I have zero tolerance for any kind of bullying or discrimination against anyone for any reason. Um, I think that these are, are, there are very complicated issues. When it comes to sexuality and gender. And I think that we need to be ready to be open and, and, and empathetic to students. In, in these, in these matters and just be ready to, to make decisions that will help them. To be the great students that they can be. Yeah, I, I think that's, that's all I have to say on that at this point. It's, it's a much more complicated issue, I think, than, than, than what can be addressed in a, in a minute and a half.
Um, Mr. Thomas?
All right, with the question you asked, um. The word inclusive means all. Means we include everyone. Whether, whatever their background would be, whatever type of home they come from. Whether it be, um, transgender, gay, straight, single parent, one mom, two moms, one dad, two dads. Um, maybe grandparents they're living with. Our kids, as a, I used to be an elementary teacher and I worked with kids from all avenues. Kids, a lot of kids come with a lot of baggage. They have things that we don't know what they ate last night for supper, if they even had any. Did they have any breakfast this morning? But what we need to do is when they walk in that door, no matter who they are, we need to love on them. As teachers, staff, we, we maybe need to give them that arm around their shoulder because they need it. Kids need that type of stuff. They need to know that they're cared for, that they're in a safe place. Where they can come and school is a time for all kids to learn who they're going to be. We all did that when we went to school. We didn't know, people would ask, what are you going to be when you grow up? We don't know, you know, we want to all go to the moon. But I didn't go and I'm not there. But what we need to do is when kids walk through the door, in order to be an inclusive school, we need to include everyone. Thank you.
And I'm having difficulty hearing the thirty-second, uh, warning bell. I don't know if, if the rest of you are. But, um, yeah, if we could, could you just practice that one for us? Make sure we can hear it?
Yeah, can you hear this?
Yep, okay, good, thanks. Okay, 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 moving right along here. Um, there were, uh, several questions about critical race theory. Um, and I'll just read them to you. Do you have any thoughts about the national discussion on critical race theory? What should Washburn Schools be talking about regarding race? Where do you stand on teaching critical race theory as important history? And what do you believe the role is for parents in deciding what students get to learn in school? So I'll give you, uh, each a minute and a half on that to start with and, um, we'll start with Mr. Wright.
I think that history should be taught from a variety of perspectives. Um, you know, we just got done having a conversation about inclusivity and I think that, uh. That, that includes history that can be, that can be, you can use the same term in terms of teaching history and civics. Um, it shouldn't just be taught from the perspective of the victor. Critical race theory is, I don't know, it's not something that belongs in, in the primary or secondary schools. It's, it's a obscure theory that is just a theory and as a theory, it can be interpreted in many different ways. And I think that there are some places in the country where it's being used to. In ways that it was never imagined by the people who, who thought it up back in the late seventies. I, you know, I, I think it has as much use in our schools as replacement theory. Uh, so I think that, um, I, I don't think that it's, it's going to happen here and I don't think it should.
All right, Mr. Thomas.
All right, also as a, a history buff, um. I agree, hi- history is important for all of us. Um, we need to hear it and we've been learning as we go along that there are many different avenues. More things are coming out that we didn't know before. The, the things that were in the textbook that I read as a kid, we've learned a few other things because other stories came out. But we need to make sure that we're learning the history of our, of our culture so that we don't repeat the bad stuff. And there have been bad things, there have been good things that we probably want to repeat, but the old phrase goes, history will repeat itself. But if we get rid of some of those histories. Then we forget and then we repeat the bad stuff. The other thing with, um. What, what your kids are being taught in the school, the curriculum is open for parents to look at. You can request to go in and see and go through the books that are there. And you can opt out if, if you disagree with something the school is teaching or you don't want them to learn this specific item. You can opt out. You can take your kid out for that day. That is available to you. We already have that in place as a school. So those type of things are already. Open to us and. I think it's important for us to continue to learn other histories, other cultures. Um, we take a world history, we learn about other places. And we need to continue to do that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sapinik?
Okay, I would, uh, I'd like to just say that our teachers are experts at teaching. Whether the topic is difficult, the topic is new, or the topic is changing. Um, I definitely believe and, and would hope that our school board would continue. To give our teachers the flexibility and the tools that they need, uh, to help our children learn well. Help our children ask questions, uh, and help our children communicate with each other. Because all of those are, are super important when we're dealing with, um. Hard conversations and hard history. Um, I know that our teachers work incredibly hard and they care for all of our students very deeply. Um, and they know that our systems have to change. You know, there's, there's people who have been left out. I talked a little bit, like just briefly touched on that topic of disparities. Early on in the conversation and, um, and I believe that our teachers and our administrators, everybody can help identify some of those disparities. To make sure that we are continuing to teach well and to help our children, uh, learn to be thinkers on their own. This is excellent work that they do.
All right. Okay, um, the next question. In light of the recent increase in book banning activities by school boards and politicians nationally. Because the books may touch on an issue that is not in the mainstream. Who do you think is best qualified to choose what is appropriate reading for our students? What do you believe is the role of, role of parents in deciding this issue? And what do you think is the role of the Washburn School Board in this issue? I'll give you, uh, one minute each, starting with Mr. Thomas.
Um, as far as book banning, I think there are. There are books that are appropriate, just like we talked about critical race theory. There are times that books are appropriate for certain age levels. And that, that's where that lies. As far as taking books out, if they cause harm to people. That, that is against the law, causing harm. But that's too, uh. Should be a committee looking to that or that should be a. In college, we read a lot of different books. In elementary, we don't. And so there are some things that are appropriate. And for those that are involved with teaching and appropriate levels there, they should know which books should be allowed and which cannot be. And if, and once again, if parents choose to not have that taught to their kids. They have the option to go somewhere else to take their kids out for that day, for that subject. Um, there are options for all of us. We don't have to start piling up books and banning them.
All right, uh, Ms. Sapinik?
Uh, so the people who decide what books are taught and discussed, obviously that is going to be, um, the teachers. Again, just kind of echoing my, my previous sentiments, um, teachers and a little shout out to my mom, the librarian. Uh, who generally has like a pretty good pulse on what's going on in the library and, and the students that are coming in there. And, um, and I feel like our teachers, um, are, are just experts in this field. Um, but it's, it. It's, uh. It's important to understand the role that parents have in this, in this conversation. And, uh, and I am my child's first teacher and ultimately their best teacher. Um, and I read with my kids all the time. Uh, and I would hope that if my kids had questions or if there was a difficult book that they were reading. Or if there was something that the teacher would want to like have family participation in, like we would, we would do that together and we would work together on that.
All right, Mr. Wright.
As a general principle, I, I, I don't think books should be banned at all. Um, I think that teachers and librarians know what books are appropriate for the, whatever, what age group. Um, I think that if a parent has a concern with a book. Then they can write a note to the librarian or the teacher and say, I don't want my child, child exposed to that book. Um, I, I, I just can't imagine that even happening though. I mean. There are books that, offensive, truly offensive and inappropriate books are just, it's just not realistic to think they're going to make it into our, our libraries or classrooms. I think that people confuse ideology with, um, perspectives. And that's where sometimes people get, get up in arms of all things. Good.
All right. Oh, okay, the next question. Uh, how would you work to address the staffing shortages that are being recognized district-wide? And starting with Ms. Sapinik?
Could I get a time for that?
Oh, I'm sorry, one minute. Thank you for reminding me.
Okay, so, um, in terms of recruiting like excellent staff. Um, I think that we just. are in it with everybody. Anybody's a dental assistant out there could use one right now. Anyway, um, there's there's staff shortages all around, and we will just will be as competitive as we can with other districts in the area. And and then just doing all of the things that Washburn does well, outdoor education, outdoor learning, inclusive learning communities, teacher-supported, inclusive learning. So that's my halfway point. So my other my other point is Northern College does not produce enough teachers for our region. And so we're just going to have to look at other universities and other schools. We have a lot to offer in the Northwoods of Wisconsin, and Washburn is an amazing community. And and we're just going to have to partner or work with other universities who are graduating excellent teachers. And thank you.
All right, Mr. Wright.
We need to pay them more. I mean, that's that's flat out what it boils down to. You know, right now Bayfield pays its teachers more than any more, any other district in this area. And for a variety of reasons, that is a school that is pretty much awash in cash, and they can do that. We can't. So I think we need to find ways to increase operating revenue so that we can pay teachers more, especially new teachers, and and also provide them with the environment that they need to do their job as best they can, which includes having more paraprofessionals in particular in the classroom. Well, I have a whole 30 seconds left. I I I echo much of what Tina and John say on these things. And I, but I, the bottom line is the bottom line. We have to pay them more. That's, you know, that's really what it comes on to in my mind.
All right, Mr. Thomas.
All right. I would I would love to pay them more, but right now, in the current position I hold, I can't even pay enough to get truck drivers or people to throw bags. I could pay them $20 an hour, and I still can't get them. So I would love, I mean, if we can find people that would come with extra pay, that'd be wonderful. But as we've talked earlier about, as again, I see there's 131 participants. I think if there's a lot of those there that would be volunteers, if we get our place opened up and get our place operating again. I know I myself have offered to come in, take time to come in and work with some kids. I think we can, we can do that, take turns in our community. And when hopefully in the short term future, we see opening up to more people that want to come to teaching. Honestly, if I were somebody going into college right now, I don't know that I would want to go into teaching based on the last two years. I hope there are still kids out there going to do it, but let's volunteer if we can to help.
All right. Next question, one minute on this. How would you work to support the mental health needs of our students and staff, starting with Mr. Wright?
Uh, well, I think, you know, that I don't know to what degree the board can really that's that's an administrative thing, you know, having more staff helps. I don't know. I'm sorry. I have to take a pass on that one. That's a, that's an interesting question.
All right, Mr. Thomas.
All right, I think to help the mental health of our our kids and our staff. At the last board meeting, we listened to a teacher talk in early childhood, talk about how they were so stressed out, how they were so maxed out. And then about 15 minutes later, the board made a policy decision that parents had to drop off their kids at the door. And so the early learning teachers had to come to the door and add one more thing to their day. And it was like, we wanted to help the teachers. That was said a few minutes earlier, but then they disregarded it. And now that teacher is even more stressed out because they lost planning time, they lost time to get things ready to have the kids come in, have a good day. I think if we can get rid of these COVID policies and get through this so that we can get back to a semblance of normality, our mental health is going to improve. We see smiles on people's faces. We're looking at each other smiling tonight because we can see their faces. Now imagine a bunch of little kids sitting in the school, they can't see a smile on their teacher's face.
All right, Ms. Sapinik.
Okay, um, mental health issues in our youth have been a rising concern long before COVID. And so I think our school district is even putting in place, I'm not going to tell them how to do the job. But but I think that they've talked about some like trauma-informed practices to support students. I know that there are models at hand that I would fully support if that's the direction that the administrators and the staff want to go to support students and staff, whether it's extra workforce in the behavioral health, you know, department, or is it contracting? Or is it school-based healthcare? Whatever, whatever model is looking good to the district, I'm in full support. Like I said, because this is something that has been building over time, COVID just put put a spotlight on it. And and it's and it's so, it's so important that we can meet these kids' needs because nobody can learn when their frontal lobe is in crisis, or when they're just like thinking with their back brain, right? We we really have to make sure that that our students are ready to learn and and addressing these mental health needs are just like a big part of that.
All right. Hey, um, now we have a specific questions for Mr. Thomas about your campaign slogans or signs, at least I think they're for you. Your campaign signs read SOS, save our schools. What do you mean by that? Save them from what? Another person says SOS implies that something is deeply wrong with the Washburn schools, and it is in need of being saved. What are the problems you see that are sinking our ship, and how do you plan to rescue our district? Putting kids first, which specific policies would you implement that puts kids first? So I guess that's a chance for you to explain, explain the slogans and signs. And then we'll give the other other folks a chance to respond to that, but your comments first.
How long do I have?
One minute.
One minute, oh, better hustle. Okay, SOS, yes, there is something wrong with our schools. As I just said about a teacher commenting to the board about what's going on inside the building, and then the board going against that. We need to listen to our teachers, our others, our staff, our administrators. We need to listen to our parents, and we need to help them. And this, it's desperate. It is SOS. That was at the last meeting. Also, putting kids first, the teachers have representation. They have a union that helps them. I'm all in favor of helping the teachers to do more. We not not do more, but to give them more access, give them more things to help to better our kids. Not ask them to do more. I want to be there to help them. But our kids don't have a voice right now. They're not being heard. When my daughter comes home and doesn't want to go to school, there's a reason for that. I need to stand up as the parent, and I need to make things right. So she wants to go. She loved school before. Now she doesn't want to go, and I've heard that from other parents with their kids. They just don't feel like going. We're in trouble. We need to put our kids' education ahead of our own politics, our own policies, and our scared feelings. We need to save us. Was that my whole time? Thanks.
I didn't hear that timer, but I I think it must
Timer did go off.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Sapinik, did you have any comments you want to make about that?
Uh, just that I think that our school district has amazing priorities. And and I think we do a great job of doing our best with the information that we have. I think that there's opportunity to do more varying types of learning, like like we talked about a little bit early on in the conversation. There's more opportunity to engage with the community with kids' learning styles. And there's opportunities for partnerships even within the school, for students to help other students. And I believe in a culture of quality improvement. I think that continuous quality improvement is something that is kind of built in to my everyday kind of workflow. It's not something that comes easy. It takes a lot of practice. And I would, I would do my best to to encourage continuous kind of quality improvement in the district.
All right, Mr. Wright, did you want to make a comment?
Just that I I don't think that there is anything inherently wrong with the Washburn School District and the way it's being managed. Certainly, we can do things to do better. Always there's room for improvement. You know, my my main goals really are more long-term. Sure, we need to get through COVID, but we need to be looking down the road 10 years. And I I think that's that's what we we need to be not just putting our kids first, but we need to be putting our kids' kids first. Well, I can say that because I have older kids, but we need to take a real long-term view on things. Thank you.
Uh, next
May I add to that? Rebuttal timer or what? The thing with that in putting our kids first, the thing is, um, there are some things wrong with our school right now, and they are immediate. I would, we need to fix the immediate so that we can go to the future. I I'm all in favor of going to the future. There are parents right now forming groups and thinking about taking their kids out of this school and forming their own school because there's something wrong. We need to acknowledge that. And we need to put our kids back where they belong as a place of importance and not just an afterthought. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, um, here's, we are, golly, we are running out of time, and I have so many questions left that the audience submitted, but here we go. One question, will the cellphone policy ever change is the question. And I think in the opening remarks, a couple of you alluded to that. So if we could just first start by maybe somebody explaining what the cellphone policy is, and will it ever change? Starting with Ms. Sapinik, one minute, please.
Um, I am not necessarily like too attached or not attached to any single policy in the school. I think we just have to do what we can with the information we have. Pretty soon we'll be like writing watch policies if we haven't already, like these are all like super important things. And and I and I and I trust that the administration and the teachers will will help the school board in the in the identification of some of these issues. And the Long Range Planning Committee and some of these other policy committees are really going to work hard to make sure that everything is implemented, like I said, with the with the best information that we have at the time to meet the needs of everybody.
All right, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, I I touched on this a little bit earlier. One of the things that I was really so pleased about with the new cellphone policy at the high school was that the board had nothing to do with it. That was something that that the administration came up with to address a need, and they did so quickly and appropriately. I I think it's important to know, to understand that cell phones aren't just phones. They can be used for much more than just talking. They can be used for bullying, and 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 they are just a constant distraction. But I also think that it's not really, you know, like Tina said, we we shouldn't be getting too far into the weeds on policymaking, on day-to-day policymaking like that as a board.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
Comment on that. That's exactly right. That's the administration's job. The board is to oversee the rest, but to enable the administration to do their job. So if they see a problem, they need to, they need to work on coming up with solutions for that. So the cellphone policy is a problem, and that's right in this school. And the board has, shouldn't have to worry about that.
All right. Um, I'll give you another, golly. We'll just run over just a little bit of time because there's so many questions. Next person says there are issues across the Bay Area schools with disruptive students taking away the already limited class time. Do you believe our current policies are working? If not, what do you think should be done? And starting with Mr. Wright.
I I I think that the current policies are are probably are working. I I'm not, I'm not too familiar with this as being a huge problem. I know that there are some discipline problems between classes and in the bathrooms, and I think administration is is trying to deal with that as best they can. As far as disrupted, you know, the disruptive student in the classroom is removed and and sent to the office. Unless that person is causing harm or is is a danger, then the classroom is is emptied out. And so that person can be, that student can be dealt with. But I guess I don't I I don't see any problems with things now. And again, it's it's probably more of an administration issue than a school board issue.
All right. All right, one minute, Mr. Thomas.
As a, in my previous teaching profession, I was an emotional behavioral teacher, and I worked with kids that, as I say, had a lot of baggage and were physically violent. And so in my training, I was trained on how to handle those so they would not harm other kids and how to remove them properly. Currently in our elementary, we've had instances this year where there's been disruptive student, and the whole class was evacuated out of the classroom instead. And so then we have our our young kids out in the hallways. That really is not acceptable. Maybe as a district, we need to look to find somebody to address some of those things. As we talked about social, emotional, mental health issues. Maybe we need to be looking, the administration needs to be looking for someone with that background. So we know how to work with these kids. I've worked in a resource room too, where these kids were able to go and get their get their feelings out, get their emotions out, get that violence out, but get them in a safe place away from the rest of the kids, so the other kids are not harmed in the process.
Ms. Sapinik, one minute.
Hey, I would just like to say again, a lot of this is just going to be directed by administration. Unfortunately, they are in the business of education and and not in necessarily some of these other social issues that come into the classroom. But yet here we are. This is not something that's new, but COVID has clearly shown a spotlight on it, like I said before. So so I'm not going to necessarily imply that like this is what's going to happen, but I know or that what I would do, but I would support practices like trauma-informed educational practices, deep empathy, and the inclusive learning experiences. This is not something that gets solved overnight, but these are all really important steps in a process to make sure that kids are supported in every way. And I just want to end by just saying that e that equal does not mean, does not mean equitable. And we just have to make sure that kids are getting the appropriate resources that they need to achieve, to achieve and decrease the achievement gap in our in our community.
All right, I'm going to do one last question or combination question, and then we'll move to the to the closing statements. Okay, um, two parts, one minute for the total. In your mind, what is the main responsibility of a school board member? And describe your experience and philosophy for leadership, budgeting, and decision-making. So those concepts going together, starting with Mr. Thomas.
Excellent. My former leadership is servant leadership. I am, as a board member, I'm a servant of the people that elected me, voted me there. So I need to listen to what they're saying. As I've hinted to you tonight, some of the issues that are going on in the school, those I heard from parents because I've listened to them. And so I need to bring those to my team on the board, and we need to say, this is what I'm hearing from the people. How can we address this, or how can we get to the administration or the teachers to say, this is what I've heard? What can we do about that? How can we make that better for that family, that student, that teacher? That is, that's the biggest thing, listening. And the leadership, I like, as I talked Uh, like as I talked to my daughter the other night and I said, the best way to get somebody to go along with you is to have them buy into what you're doing. We as a board need to propose things that people will buy into and wanna be a part of. Thank you.
All right, all right, uh, Ms. Sapnick.
Okay, uh, basically I feel like uh, vision is an essential part of being a board member. Um, I think that every child really deserves or should have access to a high-quality um, or equality public education. Uh, it's the foundation, I think, of, or a part of the foundation of our community and what makes us so great. Um, I have leadership skills in a national nonprofit um, that I'm terming out of. Uh, I was the board president of uh, of a dental organization, um, kind of smallish. But, but again, we, we worked with data-driven decision-making uh, constantly on that board. Um, especially during our COVID transition over the last two years. Um, and really just taking the evidence that we have uh, to really build this like continuous culture of improvement. Um, and uh, and ultimately, uh, a board member needs to have a commitment to collaborate. And um, and I feel like I can bring that, I've been working with families in this community for thirteen years and, um, and I'm ready to keep doing it.
All right, Mr. Right.
I think that the primary role of a school board member really is to represent the people of the district. And, and that means everyone, uh, not just those who voted. Um, this, this means that you might have to compromise on your positions. You might have to completely change your mind even on, on positions. Uh, depending on what you're hearing from the people in the district. Um, and I also think that a school board needs to be um, visionary and long-term thinking. We need to ensure the survival of the district, because it wasn't that long ago really that. This district almost would, it was considered to be merged, merging with uh, South Shore and Bayfield. Um, we need to ensure the survival of the district for the students of the future. Um, my background in leadership, I, I've been in corporate communications and marketing. Um, and uh, started my own business when I moved up here two years ago. And I guess I'm done.
All right, well, thank you and apologies if we didn't get to your question, but we have just run out of time. And our goal really was to have asked questions on enough of a variety of, of topics. That the audience has a really good sense of each candidate. So we would like to thank everyone who turned in questions. Uh, there were so many, many thoughtful questions. Um, okay, it's uh, now time to hear the one-minute closing remarks. We're going to go in reverse order from their opening statements for, so first we go to uh, Ms. Sapnick. Okay, one, please.
Thanks, uh, I just, um, I just wanna say that over the past couple of weeks, I've just been uh, learning so much. From people who I've been talking to and um, in some of the interactions that I've had. Um, I, I'm humbled by how hard um, everybody is working through this um, transition. And, and I'm just so confident and so comfortable with the idea of working together. To really just rise stronger from these um, unprecedented challenges. Uh, I'm so thankful for the opportunity to serve and um, and. And we have so much that we can leverage uh, just to make our school district and our community and our children uh, just stronger. And we're ready to be global citizens, so thankful, thanks.
All right, one minute, Mr. Thomas.
Like, thank you all for tuning in tonight and taking an interest in our community and our kids. Um, thank you for being here tonight. My slogan is putting kids first. I believe that's why we're here. We, if we didn't have our kids, we wouldn't have a school. There wouldn't be a reason for it. So putting our kids first is my slogan. That is what I intend to do when uh, hopefully you elect me to the school board. And uh, we carry on with that. I feel that business as usual is no longer acceptable. We need to have some new fresh ideas. There are some ideas that we're already working on. Um, through committees, through talks that are good and need to move along. I'm here tonight because our children matter to me, each one of yours, no matter who they are, no matter what they come with. I've worked with all sorts of kids over my career, so I know where they come from. I don't wanna look back at the end of this and say I didn't give it my best. So that's what I'm here tonight. The only agenda I have is because our kids are worth it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Right.
I just wanna say that I am immensely proud to be a parent in this district. I'm proud to be a castle guard and I'm proud of the, the people in this school district. Um, you know, at one point here in this panel meeting, we had a hundred and forty-five participants. Uh, this, the kind of involvement that um, the parents in particular and the people in general in this district have. In this school district is, is amazing really. And I think that um, that, that speaks to the fact that we have four people running for one seat on school board. Uh, that's, that's historically pretty unusual. Uh, in the past, um, the board has had to recruit people. To, to replace people who are stepping down. Um, so I just think that it's great and I will say that if I am not elected. I will not be too chagrin because I feel that uh, we have uh, two other candidates that I've gotten to know tonight. Will do a great job if elected. Uh, it's unfortunate we couldn't have Ed here. I, I would have liked to get to him better too. Thank you.
Well, thank you uh, all so much. Um, the primary election is February fifteenth. And again, um, we had technical difficulties, difficulties uh, with Ed Gruel. But I just want to remind everybody again that he is also on the ballot, so don't forget that. Um, and of course, the lead woman voters is going to urge you to vote. Um, we thanks, thanks again to the candidates and especially thanks to the audience for um, your attendance. And also for turning in a lot of great questions. And thanks to Ellen and Sophie. And also to Carolyn for helping with the forum tonight. So, good night and the meeting is now going to be uh, ended. Bye-bye.